Good afternoon. Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. We are going to begin, we are in Einstein Chambers meeting in closed session, and I am asking Vice Chair Melnick to read us into closed session.
I move that the school board recessed into closed session to deliberate on the following matters. Into a closed meeting pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, 1, and 8, Paragraph of Dakota, Virginia, 1950, as amended for. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, namely to discuss: A, employee dismissal grievance number 529-03-09-22, namely for the school board to make a determination on a grievance appeal of a dismissal from employment; B, employee grievance number 530-03-14-22, namely to consider employee requests for waiver of time period to file for the next step in the grievance procedure; and two, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure or meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely for a discussion of status pending matters.
So that's the motion. And a second, Mrs. Riggs, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have eight ayes to go into closed.
You have not done... ...exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which the certification applies. But only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. I need a motion.
Motion, Mrs. Manning, a second, Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have nine ayes.
So now we go to our two motions.
Okay. So... I have it. Okay. All right. I move that in employee grievance number 530-03-14-22, employee requests for waiver of time period to file for the next step in the grievance procedure. The school board has considered the employee's request and resolves that the school board denies the employee's request for waiver of the employee's grievance time period to file for the next step in the grievance procedure.
And a second, Mrs. Hughes. Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand.
We have nine ayes for the motion.
So the motion...
For the motion to...
No, no, just announce that the motion passed.
Nine ayes, and the motion did pass.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of the first matter. Now on to the second. So shall we have somebody else?
No. I don't want to say that.
You can, it's not confidential. We just don't have, we generally don't read it.
Well, I won't. Okay. Resolution regarding grievance case number 529-03-09-22. Resolve that on March 22, 2022, the school board considered the disciplinary decision of the Chief Human Resources Officer, the transcripts of the February 24, 22, 2022 hearing, and the exhibits. And it is resolved that the school board adopts the disciplinary decision of the Chief Human Resources Officer that the grievant be dismissed from employment. And further resolve that the clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the grievant, the city attorney, the employee relations specialist, the executive director of the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services, and the Chief Human Resources Officer, who is directed to place a copy of this resolution, the disciplinary decision of the Chief Human Resources Officer, and exhibits in the grievance personal file, adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 22nd day of March, 2022.
So we do take a motion.
That was your motion. Ms. Hughes, you need a second.
Actually, we need a motion.
Yeah, I just read a resolution.
That was a motion.
It wasn't a motion, it was just a resolution, so I need a motion.
So make a motion.
So a motion, Mrs. Anderson, a second, Mrs. Franklin. Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have nine ayes, the motion did pass.
I just didn't want to, I didn't want to read that.
I picked up on it, thank you for the back catch. So that concludes our closed session, and we will reconvene in chambers at 4:30 for our workshop. Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This administrative, informal, and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is convened at 4:30 PM on this 22nd day of March, 2022. Members of the public, as always, are able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the school board's protocol to break at 5:30 PM to prepare for the formal session, the six o'clock formal session. At 5:30, the board will conclude this session of the meeting unless the school board votes to continue until 5:45, and we can conclude no longer than that time to allow the board and administration to prepare for the six o'clock formal meeting. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chair Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Riggs.
Thank you. And I will add to that that we have Ms. Owens absent due to a personal matter, and Ms. Weems is absent due to a personal health matter. So that brings us to school board administrative matters and reports. Any colleagues have anything to share? Then I'll go ahead briefly and mention that I was happy to represent all of you at Kempsville High School a few weeks ago. The Daughters of the American Revolution has loyally continued its annual recognition of our social studies students and teachers. And there were four teachers recognized, four American history teachers, as well as an American history student from each of our respective high schools. So again, our special thanks to the local Daughters of the American Revolution for bringing that to light each year for us. Another event, and this exhibit is still open until March 27, but the Virginia Beach Arts Center down at the Ocean, Virginia Beach Boulevard, very close to the oceanfront, they presently have a display. There was an opening reception earlier this month of our student artwork. But the unique thing about this is it's called "The Art of Poetry." And once the students from VB Middle and Old donation school, the middle school students developed poems, they wrote poems. And these poems were distributed to local artists. And artists picked a poem to, you know, to commission an image for, a portrait for. And it's pretty remarkable. I think, you know, some of the major museums have done similar efforts. So it is, it's worth a look. And again, a great way to showcase our students. And finally, another organization, Connect with a Wish, is doing good things for the foster students in the region. And many of them are enrolled in our own school system. And so it's a group doing a lot of good work. And they had an event with about 75 students present earlier this month. And the featured speaker was NFL player Galen Elmore, retired from the Bengals. And he himself was a foster child. So that was pretty powerful. And in the meantime, our FACE group out of Community Engagement is kind of elevating its connection with this Connect a Wish group. You know, again, to remember that we do have a foster child population. And there's a lot of good organizations doing good partnership work with the school system for those students. All right, so that brings us to item B, the quarterly forecast for April, May, and June. Dr. Spence?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the board should have a copy of the quarterly forecast. And as always, this is our opportunity to set the agenda for the next couple of months. And there are a couple of changes that I'll, or additions that I'll note as I go through fairly quickly. In the first meeting of April, under Workshop, you see there we've got an update on transportation, school resource officers, and an update on what's going on with the HVAC upgrade that has to happen here at the school administration building. You can see what's under Information and Action. And again, another reminder, this is an opportunity for board members to suggest any changes or additions to this. April 26, Workshops include a budget reconciliation conversation as well as market study proposal update from Human Resources. In addition to that meeting, Workshop, we also intend to bring forward a PPEA update for you all to have some discussion just about what's going on there in terms of process and timeline. As we move over to the 10th of May, we have a conversation that needs to be taken up again, which is school board compensation philosophy. That's a continue on from our retreat conversation in July about compensation philosophy and is going to align with information that's needed from the folks who are doing the compensation study that you'll hear about in one of the April workshops. And end of May, we're suggesting a conversation with you all about the employee input survey, an update from the Office of Family and Community Engagement, and a conversation about a welcome center that we want to have with you. In June, you could see our kind of annual professional development update. But we are also talking about a PPEA update. I'm going to note that although that says Workshop, we would actually want to move that over to Information. And so that would just shift over from the Workshop section to the Information section. And late June, we'll give you a staffing update, let you know how our staffing efforts are going. As you know, that's heavily underway even now. And it's also very challenging. And it's going to continue to be challenging, we think. And so we'll be talking with you about that in greater detail in June as we continue to do the work and think that through right now. So that's the workshop topics, the information topics. You know, tend to change as we go through. But in general, the ones that you'll see in here are information topics that are annual. So for example, a resolution around grant funding, general fee schedules. We will give you, we do plan to give you a summer learning update in May, which will be related to our plans for this coming summer and what we intend to do to continue to build on the successes of the programs that were put in place last year. We'll bring to you, as we always do, a legislative review of the General Assembly session in May. And we will also be prepared to have a conversation about the final operating budget reconciliation. That is after the city council takes its final actions on the city budget. And so we'll be able to talk to you about any changes that we may need to make then. In June, as I mentioned, we intend to bring a PPEA update for Information at the first meeting. And then you'll get the annual reports from the Special Education Advisory Committee and the Community Advisory Committee for Gifted Education. So it's a full calendar. And I think also, Madam Chair, in our discussions, you had mentioned an interest in collective bargaining.
Well, it's, thank you, Dr. Spence. The process we've had going with just beginning at the granular level with the, going back to the summer retreat and the history of meet and confer with teachers. And our last formal discussion on the topic was September 14. I have the handout here. And where that was left was that there would be a follow-up session on digging deeper into, for lack of a better term, what perhaps an improved or enhanced meet and confer might look like. So there was never an intent to have this much time elapsed. But, you know, we've all, that's, I wanted to get past budget season. It was on my radar that that was this kind of, you know, just something we had a return to. And so I'm asking for that to be considered for a workshop. And because of the timeframe, preferably sooner rather than later in this quarter, but...
So I talked briefly with the team about that after our conversation. I think it would make sense, both in terms of conversations about Human Resources, but also because there's nothing else on the agenda for that workshop to put in in May 10, if the board's comfortable with that.
Okay.
So we will add a collective bargaining update to the workshop session for May the 10.
And that works for HR, Ms. Woodhouse? I see you nodding, okay.
Yeah, and Ms. Lanetti will be working on that with us as well. So are there any other questions or...
Okay, yes, Mrs. Hughes.
So one of the other topics that I had brought up would be a discussion on whether or not to renew with VSBA. So I'd like to see us add that toward end of April or beginning of May.
Yes, and that would be good because Mrs. Felton, I've been in touch with, in conversation with Mrs. Felton, and we felt we would reach out to VSBA as part of that process, you know, so...
Open to the board's direction on that. I'm not sure if that's workshop information or action. Probably an action item, but did you want to have information discussion on that prior to?
Or I think a workshop discussion was what we had planned on. No, I'm sorry, what did you ask for? Let's go back to that.
Um, end of April or beginning of May. I mean, we could put it on information on the 26th and action on February, I mean, I'm sorry, on May 10.
We'll certainly be ready to talk about that if that's the timeframe in Workshops.
Or the other option is to start with it as a workshop discussion. Do you want to start with information?
Information's fine, yeah.
Okay. We'll make note of that, and we'll, I'll follow up.
Before we move on, Chair Rye, it has been considerable information. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Manning. And then we'll have you, Mrs. Felton.
Yeah, I know that Ms. Weems brought up in the budget discussions, and I think she's been having some conversations about the potential for a recovery school program. So I think we need to get that on the calendar for discussion sooner rather than later.
So the conversation that I had with her was that she was comfortable with us making that a retreat topic.
Okay.
And so this would just be post-retreat.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we will make sure that that is on the retreat agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Felton.
I will refer my concern and talk with you later concerning the conversation about the VSBA. I'll do it that way, as it would be more appropriate.
Okay.
So as always, if something else comes up, just reach out. And if we need to make adjustments, we'll be prepared to do that. But we'll get these changes noted and use those as we move forward with agenda planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. All right, final workshop item of the day. We welcome Dr. Parrott and Dr. Baniki for our educational equity update.
Good afternoon. Chair Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, Dr. Spence, and our viewing public. I'm Lekeesh Parrott, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I'm joined by Dr. Lisa Baniki, Executive Director of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. And we are here to provide an update on the Division's work of advancing educational equity. Following our school board workshop on November 23, a key next step was shared to engage more voices in the educational equity efforts as we developed the Division's Equity Plan for the board's consideration. In this presentation, we will share the four-pronged approach to develop our Equity Plan, which includes an overview of key actions taken, those in progress, how we engage the broader community, both in the restructuring of the Equity Council and the forming of the Administrative Educational Equity Committee, feedback received from various community input opportunities, and our next steps forward. On this slide, you will find our timeline for accomplishing our key task to support the development of our educational equity plan. There were three community input opportunities total, two completed, and one pending, which will be highlighted later in this presentation. In February, we formed the Administrative Educational Equity Committee. This group will assist with the development of the Division's Equity Plan. Updates on progress will be provided ongoing to this board. A formal update to the board is planned during your summer retreat in July with adoption of our Equity Plan in the fall of 2022, pending the board's approval. A recommendation from our recent equity assessment was to restructure the Equity Council in an effort to broaden and balance the stakeholder participation and the work of the council. The first phase of restructuring was to open membership to the Equity Council to the broader community. This was done through an Alert Now message as well as a slider via vbschools.com on January 13 through February 15. This outreach resulted in 62 applications received with 31 invitations extended for membership. The Equity Council is now comprised of our two school board liaisons, Mrs. Carolyn Weems and Mrs. Jessica Owens, to also include representation of Virginia Beach City Public School staff, students, community members, and parents. There is one remaining seat available for a student that will be extended at the Summer Diversity Ambassador's Workshop in July. This addresses the balance requested by the community. We now have eight members of each stakeholder group mentioned previously to serve on the new restructured Equity Council. The council will meet for the first time, this new council will meet for the first time, on April 7. We will have introductions, share the Division's educational equity work to date, and assign work group assignments aligned to our Equity emphases of Compass to 2025. The Office for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion look forward to leveraging the experiences and leadership of this group. To develop our Division's educational equity plan, we formed an Administrative Educational Equity Planning Committee to take up the charge to examine the community input data, the equity assessment recommendations, and other relevant data sources needed to draft this multi-year Equity Plan. The composition of the Administrative Educational Equity Committee includes our two school board liaisons, Mrs. Weems and Mrs. Owens, as well as the other stakeholder groups you see represented on this slide. The committee has held one meeting, and that was on February 23. If our first meeting is of any indication of the passion and leadership resulting from this group, I am confident we have the right people at the table. And we are grateful for their leadership and time committed to the advancement of educational equity in Virginia Beach schools. As shared on the previous slide, the Administrative Educational Equity Committee met for the first time on February 23. During this meeting, we received our warm welcome by our superintendent, Dr. Spence, and engaged in introductions. Some other, some of the other items shared and discussed are reflected on this slide. Other information shared included the equity assessment results and our Equity emphases outlined in our strategic framework, Compass to 2025, that expresses the foundational pieces of educational equity. We engaged in a protocol around the hopes and fears related to the development and implementation of the Division's Equity Plan. This will allow us to design a plan that maximizes the hopes and minimizes the fears associated with this work. This committee will convene through June of 2022 to develop the Equity Plan. Future meeting dates and agenda items will be shared later by Dr. Baniki. So now I turn it over to Dr. Baniki, who will provide a brief overview of the efforts to expand community participation in the development of the Division's Equity Plan through two feedback opportunities and future meeting dates and agenda items for our planning committee.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott, and welcome, Dr. Baniki.
Thank you so much. So thank you, Dr. Parrott. I'm going to provide a bit more detail about the opportunities, I'll make sure I'm on the right side, that were provided to solicit more input from various stakeholders. That's why I stood in the back, so it wouldn't be as noticeable how short I am. Okay. One method involved convening listening sessions of students, parents, and staff separately. To identify potential participants, we selected schools based on their feeder patterns, so that each feeder grouping was represented. And based on the comparable schools information that the Office of Research and Evaluation provides, the comparable schools information is generated through the use of a statistical procedure called cluster analysis. And it identifies schools that are similar to one another based on demographics. When selecting schools, we made sure not to select two schools from the same comparable school grouping to maximize diversity. Listening sessions with students were conducted with secondary students only. Parental permission was secured in advance of their participation. Each school site engaged in two listening sessions of the various stakeholder groups. Several preformed groups were also solicited to participate in sessions. The Offices of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and Planning, Innovation, and Accountability collaborated in the development of the session protocol. And each session was facilitated by an external facilitator with a member of ORE and DEI in attendance to take notes using a standardized note-taking form. And the total number of participants across the sessions was 278, and the breakout by stakeholder group is listed on this slide. As part of the listening sessions, participants were asked what the Division does well with respect to providing all students with a high-quality education where they feel safe, welcome, and included, what barriers or inequities, if any, they'd experienced in the school or division, suggestions for collaborating with the community to advance educational equity, suggestions for addressing the three areas that emerged from the Equity Assessment, their three large findings, equity-related issues that should be addressed beyond those three, and which of the equity topics was most important to them. Staff in the Office of Research and Evaluation reviewed the notes from the listening sessions to identify key themes that were emerging when looking at individual respondent groups, students, staff, and parents. For the purposes of providing the school board with a summary today, I've listed themes on this next slide that emerged as a key theme for at least two of the respondent groups. So the themes listed for what the school division does well, making students feel welcome and providing resources to students, were themes for all three stakeholder groups. Some of the resources mentioned were Chromebooks, enrichment activities, financial support for after-school, and financial support for after-school programs. When asked about barriers or inequities within the school division, students and staff mentioned teachers feeling they're unable to address certain topics such as LGBTQIA students, how to teach about some historical events because of the current political climate. Staff and parents spoke about the need to have the same resources available to all schools for all students. And when asked for suggestions for advancing equity in collaboration with the community, all three respondent groups spoke about increasing partnerships with businesses and organizations to provide programming and support. And staff and students in particular also expressed a desire to have the program come to the school to alleviate transportation issues. When asked for suggestions related to hiring, retaining, and promoting teachers and administrators of color, which was one of the big themes from the Equity Assessment, staff and... of color, which was one of the big themes from the Equity Assessment, staff and parents mentioned recruiting pipelines with special emphasis on historically black colleges and universities. The theme of making VBCPS a place where all staff feel safe, welcome, and included emerged from staff and parents. In response to suggestions for addressing discipline disparities, all three respondent groups mentioned making sure expectations at all schools were the same for all students. A second theme related to this question focused on providing trainings to staff on a variety of topics such as trauma-informed practices, mindsets, and social-emotional learning. When asked for suggestions for increasing access to rigorous learning opportunities, all three groups spoke to finding ways to communicate information to students, parents, and the community. Staff and students suggested finding ways to allow students to explore and be exposed to rigorous course content. When asked which of the educational equity topics discussed was most important to them, all three groups indicated access to rigorous courses and other learning opportunities. Staff and parents referenced discipline disparities and diverse workforce representation in the school. There were, these were also the top three themes that emerged from the Equity Assessment earlier this year. A note about representation. When staff and parents spoke of representation, they were not just referring to race and ethnicity, they specifically called out gender as well. Also, it should be noted that when students were asked for suggestions for hiring and retaining and promoting teachers of color, one of the themes that emerged was that race didn't matter, but shared experience and connection or rapport did from the student perspective. And the last two themes listed on this slide were specific to an individual respondent group. A theme specific to staff was around community engagement and parental involvement, and reflected a desire to have parents and communities in the school supporting students in authentic ways. An equity issue that students considered important was respecting student culture and their lived experience. In addition to the listening sessions, we also sought community input through an online feedback forum that was hosted on a site under the Office of Diversity Equity and Inclusion webpage. The site explained the purpose of the forum, provided links to our strategic framework, the educational equity policy, and an infographic containing a short overview of how we're defining educational equity, why it matters, and the findings that emerged from the Equity Assessment. We provided the two questions you see listed on the slide and invited comments from March 4th through March 20th. A total of 57 people posted comments to the forum. Given the number of respondents, it was difficult to generate big themes from them, but as I thought about how best to summarize what was there, I thought it would make sense to look at it through the lens of comments that appear to support the work and comments that oppose, that oppose or question the focus on equity. There were 28 people who made a suggestion for an area of focus for the Equity Plan and/or paid a compliment for current practices, six people who clearly stated that they would not be, that we should not be focusing on equity, four people who questioned why it would be a focus, and four people who expressed concerns over lowering standards. The concern that focusing on equity means lowering standards was also something that emerged from the Equity Assessment. For the remainder of the comments, it was too much of a stretch, I'll say, to try to classify as supporting or opposing, and those comments are still available for public review on our website. In terms of next steps, this slide displays the meeting schedule for the Administrative Educational Equity Planning Committee. We will share the themes that emerged from the listening sessions, as well as the verbatim comments posted to the forum with the committee at our meeting on Wednesday to inform the planning process. Between the March meeting of the committee and the May meeting, we'll be launching an Equity Planning Survey to secondary students, families, and staff to help identify priorities for action in the plan, all with the goal of providing the School Board with a final draft of the plan by the July retreat. As we wrap up our time together, Dr. Parrott and I would like to express our gratitude to the principals who helped with the logistics of the sessions, our external facilitators for their assistance in running the sessions, and for the willingness of our parents, students, and staff to share their perspectives and their experiences. We are also grateful for the people who took the time to visit and post to the feedback forum. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Dr. Parrott and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Now we get to stand side by side. Don't do that. You go ahead, you go ahead, you start.
Thank you, ladies. So can you clarify for me the next steps? The Equity Planning Survey that is, that comes next?
Yes.
Explain, I, the difference between that and the feedback, the virtual feedback forum, and I know, I understand it is different, but can you go into more detail?
Sure, and I'm going to try not to make a funnel, because they make fun of me for it, but the, well, I'm going to do it anyway. So when we're developing, I've done it all day. So the listening session, the feedback forum is about gathering, like, you're still have a really open hand of what are the things they want to share with us, what are the things that will feed into the plan? We're using that information to develop a survey, because now you're trying to prioritize. So based on some of the things we're hearing from our listening session and what we've gotten from our Equity Assessment, we would develop a survey that helps prioritize focus areas, so it's getting a little further down the funnel into the development of the plan. So I'll stop making the funnel. Simple. Did I answer your question?
For me, I don't know if it generates any others, but that, I just thought for the benefit of everybody, that was worthwhile, so thank you. Mrs. Melneck?
So I don't have a question, but Dr. Parrott, I do, you did, you did mention something that I wrote down, and that was to maximize hopes and minimize fears. And so I hope with the restructuring of the Equity Committee and the implementation of the working groups within that committee that that is exactly what happens. So for you, for you, Dr. Banake, I hope that is exactly what happens, and I loved my time on the Equity Council, and I know that the rest of the community involved will love that as well.
Yes.
And so thank you for all the time you put into this.
Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
So I'm sure there are going to be people who are going to ask, are you concerned that there were only 57 participants in a division as large as ours? You know, you can look at it two ways. There were only 57 participants who cared enough about this issue to partake in the survey. Or you could say there were 57 participants who showed interest, but there were also thousands of people in our division who feel like we must be doing a good job. I mean, you can look at it as a glass half-full or the glass half-empty. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up, because I tend to look at it as, we have a lot of people who are very happy with our school division and that we're doing a good job. We have a few people who are, who will say, I'm going to partake in this survey because I want to see what kinds of questions are being asked, and I want to contribute. And then, you know, we could all, there are also people out there who, who look at it and say, okay, they're doing another survey, another survey, you know, because we do do a lot of surveys. So I just, would you give me your intake on this and how you feel about 57 participants and 80 comments?
Sure. This Dr. Spence is shaking his head, no, I'm kidding. So first, I want to start with, it wasn't a survey, and that's just me coming from a place of the person who oversees surveys. It was a feedback forum, there were two questions. I understand, I'm just, I am just counting hairs there, so as not to call it another survey. But so for me, what I would say is, I think some of it is, people may want to see more specifics of what the plan is before they want to weigh in one way or the other. I do think there's a, you think about this, you know, counting for why there might not have been some piece of it could be, some piece of it could be they want to know more specifics, because there was some question raised about, well, what exactly will this be about? And I think some good portion is if you don't have an issue, or you're not concerned, and you're happy, then you're not going to weigh in on it either. Yeah, so I think it could be a mix of things that you've indicated.
Right.
Right.
So, you know. But it wasn't a survey. Thank you, I'm sorry for saying it that way, but.
Don't apologize to me.
But it was feedback.
Feedback, yep.
Thank you.
Can one of you share how the student representatives landed, where they did, what, how you wound up with the students, you did, what the outreach was, or?
Well, that's why we had to ensure we thanked our principals at our schools, because our principals were key in identifying students that may have had an interest that belonged to different clubs and organizations, and so we worked very closely with our principals to, to identify students, and then we then had to reach out to their parents in a form of, the word starts with a C, confirmed consent?
Oh, active consent.
Active consent, to get permission from their parents for them to participate in a listening session. So again, working very closely with the schools, with principals, to secure students.
So you said eight from each stakeholder group, so in effect?
Oh, you mean part of the Equity Council, I'm sorry. I jumped to the listening sessions. The Equity Council, the membership form was available on vbschools.com, so it's accessible to any stakeholder. And so our students applied on their own to participate in the Equity Council, the seven students that are part of our council now.
And among them, that's a fair representation of different high schools, I would imagine?
Yes, yes. Now, I've not met these people in person yet, that's coming soon, but yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? So the, let's go back to the timeline to see when we will next, your, your, your group will be meeting, the planning committee, and you come back to the School Board, let's recap that.
We have as the big comeback July, but that doesn't mean we can't also come to PPMC meetings and then via memo as we get more information, so that, so that it doesn't feel like there's a black box occurring from the time from now until July, so that you feel like you're in the loop of the information, plus you have two board members who serve and can share out from the, you do.
Right, and also through committee reports, our two liaisons and Mrs. Felton as that committee chair. Anybody else?
I would just add, so, you know, one of the reasons that Dr. Banake is engaged is because we wanted the process to feel very similar to the strategic planning process, because that's a process that has successfully worked a number of times for the school division to arrive at, at really good plans. And so we're modeling this process after the strategic planning process, and so that's why you see the steps that you see, and that's why we're thinking it's going to take until July to get to a first draft of this plan, because as you probably remember, that strategic planning process is a, is a, is a very thorough process. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay, we thank you both very much. So that concludes our workshop, and we will reconvene here back in chambers at 6:00. Meeting adjourned.